Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hans Clingsen. I'm chairman of the Village Official Planning Board. And I'll call the Village Official Planning Board for July 17, 2025. At what at this time, would the secretary please take a roll call to establish a quorum?
Grace Cacciallo.
Here.
Anthony Ruggiero.
Here.
Joe Tessa. Ezra Holly.
Here.
And others in attendance are Nick Warner, building inspector, Christian Pajee, village engineer, and Sarah Brown, village planner.
Okay, we do have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to welcome Anthony Ruggiero to the board. I think you know a thing or two about planning.
A little bit.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for May 15, 2025. Any corrections?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried. First item on the agenda is a referral from the village board for local law reference number two of 2025. Nick, you want to bring us up to speed on this?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. As you may recall, we've had a discussion over the past several months regarding the signed district regulations and most specifically, the approval or the need for approvals in districts two and three, the intermediate areas and then the areas specific to the route nine and eighty-four corridors. The conversation is relative to whether or not those two districts would require applicants to come here before the planning board, like some of them are doing this evening, and whether or not the planning board would need the oversight of those districts. It's been a discussion and a conversation that we look at the possibility of giving that authority to the building department and myself to review those applications. And so long as they conform to the district regulations, I have the ability to review those and approve them and then issue permits from our office to save the applicants and their professionals the time of coming before the planning board and the time of you folks having to review said application. So that's why you're reviewing this or commenting on it tonight. And it's why the village board is having a public hearing on it this coming Monday and hopefully acting upon that as well.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Nope. Sounds good.
Do any comments? Want to make any comments or changes to the...? No?
It's good.
Then I'll entertain a motion that we send the village board a memo saying that we have no comment on the issue and we're happy with it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried. Nick, next on the agenda is the village local law referral number three of 2025. Review zoning codes for One Academy Street, Eighteen Church Street. Again, Nick, would you bring us up to date on this?
I'm actually going to ask if Sarah doesn't mind. She did write the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. She wrote the local law, I believe, on this one and can give you a little bit more specific background on what we're proposing here.
So, the owner of Eighteen Church Street, which also includes One Academy Street, which is a residential... There's a house at One Academy. It's all on the same property. The person who owns the property, Eighteen Church Street, is the old Fishkill Glass Building. And they would like to be able to put some residential apartments in there. But as it's currently zoned, it's in the GB2 district, which does not allow for any apartments or any kind of multifamily dwelling. So the applicant had petitioned the village board to ask to be rezoned to the R-50 district, which actually borders the property. The school property is zoned R-50. The village board asked us to do some zoning analysis on it. And we were... Our conclusion that we came to was that that would be the most appropriate thing to rezone it to would be R-50. It does border the VCBD district, but with rezoning it to that, they could do residential, but there would also be a whole list of commercial uses that could be put in there. And frankly, with it being next to the school, we recommended a less intense use with doing the R-50 district. There's also been some issues. The reason they want to put apartments in there is they've had some trouble renting space commercially anyway. So it almost seems like it's not viable as a commercial space at this point.
Teresa?
I think we've had a few people... What was it? The fish store or something? We've had a few people come here. No, I don't have a problem except under... Is this the actual one that they're going to sign or anything? Because on page one of it, under section one, there's a blank that says local law number and it should be in... Number three should be in that.
Yeah, I think it updated.
Okay, it did?
No, it did it on this copy, but I'll make sure that it does in the official copy.
That's it.
Anthony?
No one... I was in favor when it was in front of us and I'm in favor of it now.
Is it?
Yeah, it makes sense. Being next to school.
Yeah.
Okay. So Teresa, the board feel happy the way it's set up? No comments?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we send a memo to the village board saying that we have no comments on this thing and rely upon everything to them.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried. Next item on the agenda is Dyson's Kitchen and Bath Cabinets. Nick, does this sign comply?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it does. This is a situation where the applicant has placed the sign before receiving approval. We do have a provision in the code that allows them to come before us and seek approval after the fact. They are in fact doing that in this case. And this is a direct replacement of the sign that was there. It's merely a change of the design. Colors remain the same, size is the same. It's just a refacing of the sign of the principal use for the main applicant.
Teresa?
They still have to do their application fee, right?
They paid their application fees. We've collected them, yes.
All right, I'm good.
Anthony?
Good. I'm good.
Good to go.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that the issue was signed. A motion to accept the sign permit as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Next item on the agenda is Savona's Pizzeria, Seventeen Merritt Boulevard, for sign approval. The applicant, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, Joe Biker family signs representing Savona's Pizza at Seventeen Merritt Boulevard, seeking sign permit for two dimensional logos externally illuminated for the peak of their new pizzeria. Total square footage, sixteen point eight square feet per elevation, or a total of thirty-three and a half square feet. It's Ransley Square. It's the plaza.
Mr. Chairman, this is the former subway location. They did not require to come before the planning board for any approvals because it was a restaurant taking over a former restaurant space. So they only are here for a sign approval. Mr. Biker will probably be appearing for the last time with a sign because it sounds like we might be heading in the direction of district two and three, not requiring to come back unless it's a new approval. So we won't... We're trying to have efficiency. This would be one of those cases in which they would not have to come in the future. The sign does conform to the regulations. The colors are of muted color and will blend in nicely with the building. And in this case, the applicant did not install the sign without prior approval. So they are here seeking your approval before doing so. So in this case, it does comply. It fits within the regulations and the guidelines. And they actually gave us a pretty nice rendering and some color samples to show what this will look like.
What about the lighting?
The lighting is shown there as well. On the back page, they provide us with fixture cut sheets and also there will be a white lighting style, down lighting, only the signs itself.
No internal elimination. Everything will be external with the gooseneck fixtures. So no face elimination.
Teresa?
No, but do we have to do two votes? Because it's two different signs on either side?
That's what... Yeah.
So is it?
Yeah.
And I see option one and option... Location A, location B. So it's two different...
Two different locations. I believe it's the south elevation, which is above the... It's what you'll see probably on page one. And location B is on an east facing elevation of the same tower. So on both sides of their entry door.
And then the pylon sign, right?
And then the pylon sign is just a tenant panel replacing the subway tenant space. No additional square footage or anything there. That's just part of their lease with Ransley Square.
As for the building mounted signs?
Sorry?
What do the building mounted signs?
So there's three signs then, the pylon and the two on each side. So we just have to vote it three times on the same application, right? That's what we've done before.
Hundred old thing over chat?
Oh, we could. If we can do that, that's fine.
You could vote to approve them as a package.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry. First night. So does the lighting... Do we have to do a motion on the lighting or is that included with the signage?
That's included with the signage.
You can include them as one package.
Yeah. This... Okay.
Teresa, you are?
Yep.
Anthony, you? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the sign package.
Moved to accept the two building mounted signs, the pylon sign and the lighting plan as per application for Savona's Pizza at Seventeen Merritt Boulevard.
Second.
A motion is second on the board, on the floor. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Aye.
That's good.
Have a good night.
Good night. Welcome to the Village of Fishkill. Very good. The agenda is C and J Properties of Fishkill LLC, 1183 Main Street. Physical appropriateness and site plan. Are the applicant pleased on the floor and identify yourself for the records?
We'll have to... They probably go the restaurant. It's... You'll see.
Yeah. Hi, Grace McGinnis from Hudson Design. You want to hear a little bit about it? Okay. So we are proposing a 7,000 square foot, two-story building on a previously developed, currently undeveloped site on Main Street as it turns into Hopewell Ave around that bend. And we are in the VCBD district, also in the historic overlay. That's why we have so much paperwork attached to our project. And yeah, restaurant on the first floor, potential event space and four apartments on the second floor. We are looking for a parking waiver as well as overall site plan approval at this time.
Now, this property here is on the across the street from the church.
Yes. So part of the reason, and I see in these comments from Sarah, that one of the things addressed is the location of the building on the site and the parking. So something that we're up against here is this 200-foot rule by the New York Liquor Authority that Nick had brought to our attention at the start of the project. We are going to be planning for a restaurant with a bar in it, looking for a liquor license. So we positioned the building in a way that the main entrance is more than 200 feet away from the church across the street and therefore complying with that rule. That does unfortunately push us into kind of a corner of the lot. We want to make sure to respect, you know, the buffers as well as the setbacks since we're up against a residential district. And so between that, the 200-foot rule and the visibility sightlines for that corner type intersection, we feel that this is the best building placement at the time.
Okay, there is an existing curb cut that the state allowed. You're going to use that curb cut. You're not going to require another one, right?
I believe this was the one approved by D O T.
Snyder with Beatty and Watson. We are proposing a new curb cut. The existing curb cut, which is shown on the plan, is sort of more towards the intersection. When we met with the... With the D O T, they suggested they suggested that we move it further away from the intersection. And that gives us... That also gives us more site distance to the east.
Sarah?
Yeah. So... You did have some comments, as you said. Our first comments were just procedural for everyone. When we get to the point of a complete application, it will need to be sent to Duchess County Planning for review comment because there is a special use permit involved in this. And site plan approval, we will have to have a public hearing. And then there will be a recreational fee required for the proposed residential units. So as far as C P R goes, this is an unlisted action. It is within the historic district. And the mapra said that it was potentially sensitive for archaeological sites. So I think it should coordinate with SHIPO and make sure that they're not going to require any kind of archaeological work. Also, you're... There's a couple properties that are actually on the national register around you. So we'll also want to coordinate on that. I did... My next comment does have to do with the layout. Would prefer to see the building up closer. Can you put... One of the comments I had was putting the buildings on the adjacent properties so we can see where it is in relation to everything. Could you also put that 200-foot marker on there?
Yeah, that's on the architectural site plan, A1.
If you can put it on the... Because I don't generally review the architectural site plan. So if you can actually put it on the site plan.
It's on there. It's probably not dark enough, so I'll make it more... Obvious.
Yeah, if you could put that on there, then we can... I'm curious where it lands.
It comes up... The 200-foot comes right up where the corner, the inside corner of the building is.
You're saying that the bar is on the other side of that line?
Or the entrance?
Yeah, the entrance.
Oh, the entrance to the building, I got you.
And then, yeah, that big dash line.
The 200-foot comes right in the middle of that, right at the... It's supposed to go to the... But I will put that on the site.
So there's no... There's no legal ground to move the building? Gets me out of this plan.
And we also want to legalize the parking. I know this... I know it's not preferred, but we wanted to be able to have parking in between the... If we moved it closer to the road, if we could, we would lose the parking stalls and like a turnout lane. So we're like right at that eighteen feet for the parking stall and then the twenty feet for the for like a turnout. And then if we move it any closer, we could put that space, so...
And with the intersection visibility requirements for this lot, there's not too much we could actually do with the fountain property other than parking nothing over three feet, I believe, so...
Right. No, I was sensitive to the fact that you're on a corner and that you're probably... That's why I had said about the site distance. And we're going to have to... Our engineers will review that information to make sure. And then I think Christian's office also made a comment about, you know, meeting with D O T. It sounds like maybe you did. Do you have anything from your meeting with them about...?
I have emails
Okay.
from... They're both... So, yeah, San Antonio.
Yeah, it's tough because of that 200-foot distance. Because this layout, you know, doesn't comply with the recommendations of the VCBD district.
But that's kind of where we wanted to start out with this whole thing was kind of getting some feedback on the building layout and the parking count.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just a recommendation to the board. It's really the board feedback on that. But I would like to see less parking along and less drag aisle along the frontage and some kind of streetscape there. That's just my two cents on it. The other thing is that you're going to have to get a parking variance because you're required to have seventy-five and you only have forty. The board can't waive that. They can only waive it if you're landbaking the spaces. But to landbank the spaces, you have to show that you can actually provide them and that's not possible here. So it's going to require variance from the Z E V A.
What was that? Landbaking?
Yeah, there's a provision that allows the board to waive up to 50%.
Right, okay.
But they can only do that if you can... You can landbank 50% if you can demonstrate that they can actually be built in the future, which there's not enough space here to do. So it is going to require a parking variance from the zoning board appeals. And then we're going to need just more specific plan information, landscaping, lighting, photometric plans, scheduled plantings, details of the trash enclosures. I would recommend a fence, whether we're relaying the building out or not. I would recommend a fence along the rear property line to prevent headlight shine into the adjacent properties. And then again, as I had mentioned, putting the adjacent buildings on so we can see them and how things fall in relation to the residences.
It's just... Can we do just... Is a plan with like an aerial... With like an aerial view, is that sufficient?
Yeah, that's fine. Just so we can see where they're located in relation to the proposed building. That was everything I have right now, Hans.
The D O T wants you to move the curb cut on, which is basically on the curb?
Yeah, that was the better location. We looked at both. We looked at that existing drop curb and...
It's more like where the two parking spots are, sort of, you know, right?
Yeah, it also gives you a better view. You know, over here, it's more of a blind curb. You have less site distance.
Christian, did you talk about your recommendation about an official survey from the D O T and like the safety of this... You know, that's the first thing I think when I drive over that way is like it's a weird corner, a lot of people coming in and out. It's already bad enough, but it gets jammed up over there.
And all the way through the street.
Ultimately.
Trying to turn left and right.
Ultimately, it's going to be up to the D O T, their call. So what we're recommending is that they take it to... We're going to need some formal feedback from the D O T on the design. So typically conceptual approval from the D O T is a requirement of... Prior to getting site plan approval. We're going to want that earlier on, I think, before any secret determination is made. And, you know, the earlier the better for you guys. So it is going to... Clearly, it's going to impact the site relative to, you know, if it's a matter of it moving around, that's obviously going to impact your parking. Or if it's going to limit ingress and egress, like as far as like right in, right out. Or, you know, who knows what the D O T is going to come up with, so...
But she said as long as we could show the site distances both ways, it would be no restriction. I mean, I'll have to... That was a while ago. We'll have to regroup with Cassandra.
And then there was no recommendations for any mitigation? Whether it was for Old Main or...
So we'll... I mean, I guess we'll get some... We'll file the... Put the part one of the application to the D O T and I don't think she's going to do anything. We need to do that. It's a nice step, is file that first.
Already, though.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they should be pretty familiar with the need to provide some sort of conceptual approval letter saying that, you know, that we're okay with the layout based on the the proposed uses and the anticipated traffic generation and the site distances that are provided there. So I would imagine that they're going to make them go through those steps to provide that information, you know, giving them, you know, the standard I T E trip generation information. You know, looking at... They'll be looking at this site specifically for, you know, traffic and crash data if it's a problem area. And the site distances. If they don't have the site distances, then they're going to weigh in on that also. So I didn't see site distances on them yet, so you still need to determine whether or not you have the... You have the site... Are they on there? Okay.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, ultimately, I mean, similar to like the Jackson project, you know, it's... It comes down to the D O T. It's their jurisdiction. It's their road. So they're going to dictate what they want to see there. So, but we think that that's beneficial to do sooner rather than later. And as early as you guys can try to get that feedback.
What are the hours for the restaurant? And...
Eleven to nine. I think that's the hours of their...
Their...
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a like...
Is there...
Their current location is in Garrison and they're excited their business.
What's the name of the...
Yeah, for...
Or...
Yeah, Pizza Emath.
Yeah.
I think the hours there are... I think they do eleven to nine or something.
So like an event stage would be like a catering, like a private party, wouldn't be like a night, like a night...
Wedding?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I think it's...
Part of that.
That question.
Yeah, potential for... So, but yeah, time to... Time to...
And there's four units up top, two bedrooms each. Is any of the parking being reserved?
Not currently, but I think I outlined on the... On our... On the civil site plan, outlined the number of spaces that are being reserved for the...
Be watching.
I think we're going for the... Yeah, I think we're proposing the waiver from the restaurant and not the... And not the... We're providing the spaces for the apartments and not the restaurant. But it's on the top, on the top right-hand corner there?
Street.
Right above the north area?
Regulation of fans. With regulation back. How many apartments are going to be?
Forty.
One for each dwelling, measured from the sidewalk.
It's one for each... And it's one for each dwelling plus one and it's plus a half.
We'll measure them from the...
Two.
And they all...
Well, it's four apartments.
Four apartments.
And then you got... So exceeding capacity downstairs, you got fifty-five, eighty-six, and then seventy-three possibly outside. Your database looks good.
It's outlined.
You're going to have... You're going to have...
The residents will never be able to park.
I mean, yeah, you're... No one's going to park.
No one is.
What will you say to the apartment state? I mean, it's just... I mean, do they take that into consideration, the D O T, about like the occupancy as far as coming and going, like on that road and all that stuff?
Yep.
I just... I mean...
Nick, you got?
I think you're... You have a hard hill to climb with seventy-five spots with... That should be forty spots where there should be seventy-five. That's a big difference. Because, you know, you have a party there. Yeah, that to me, I think, is your biggest hurdle.
Sarah, how many parking spots are required per apartment?
Per apartment, I believe it's...
Well, there's a calculations.
Yeah, one per apartment plus a half per bedroom.
It's on, it's on the.
Yeah, it's.
Two for each apartment. It's on.
So that'd be eight, but that that's for two bedrooms. There there's a calculation for it. It's one, one per unit plus. A half per bedroom.
Yeah.
It's it's one for every unit and then a half. For every. Bedroom, so yeah, it turns out to be two.
Yeah, they're all two bedrooms, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, your your plan here has half the. Taking the apartments out of it, if you're gonna reserve them, that's eight. You have thirty-two sparking parking spaces when the requirement is sixty-seven. That's less than half. And it's and it's not like you can, well, you could, but it's not gonna happen. People can utilize public parking in Village, but that means they gotta cross Route Nine to walk there and. That's a safety issue in my mind and it should be in the rooms, the restaurants mind also. So, yeah, cause there's no park, public parking there. Until you cross Route Nine. Unless you. Shop right.
That's that's about the closest uh. That's about the closest area for parking would be the Shopper at Plaza.
So I'm I'm just.
That parking was.
That's, that's a.
The whole area was closed.
I mean, if it's a takeout place, that's probably a little bit different, but it's not. It's a restaurant. So people are gonna be sitting in there. Forty-five minutes, an hour. Whatever. Yeah. I'm actually gonna expect to be busy.
I just wanted to jump in. I've just, I had a couple more comments worth going over, um.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, the the Village of Fish Hill. Also, um, has. More stringent requirements relative to stormwater. So a SWIP is gonna be needed for post, including post-instruction, uh, stormwater management practices for water quality and quantity. Um. So, uh.
I was thinking about doing like a bio swell along the back of the property where the fence could be like along the twenty-foot.
Yep.
Something like that, or some some uh, some drywalls underneath. Or something, we haven't gotten that far.
Yeah, there's there's a lot of impervious and, you know, it's all gonna depend on how much, what what the soils are out there, so it's just. You know, anything can be done. It's just something to keep in mind, but it's gonna. It's it's definitely something to consider. Um. The the other items, um, were really just checklists from the uh, in our letter, just things that will will need to be provided. Um. Want to correct some, one of our comments, number three, that set the county health department approval will each be demonstrated for the new water and sewer utilities. Um, that depends on what the layout is, you know, if it's just a uh, single service connection for water. That doesn't necessarily need health department approval, but the backflow preventer will. So so certain items may, certain items may not, so that just just for clarification. Um, obviously grease trap for um, to protect the sewer system. Um, the village has specific grease trap requirements, all they all need to be um, exterior grease traps. Um.
They're tiny.
Exactly.
We get one for the 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 bees.
Exactly, exactly, and just demonstrating that um, only the kitchen lines are going there, anything that could be grease, uh, grease laden goes to the grease trap. Um. Uh, vehicle turning movements throughout the site, uh, it looked like the uh, um, the trash. Area would be difficult to get to and back out, yeah, so. Um, but I know it's early on in in your design. So that was really the main ones. The rest of them are really just checklist items similar to what Sarah had brought up, uh. Things that will need to be brought up, need to be provided, but obviously you guys are still working out, um, some of the more general items.
Does the village have details on the um? The sewer and water uh service, or is it just, um? You have your, you have your own details for that?
We, yeah, we do, um, that that was one of our. Comments too, was just to refer to the water and sewer uh ordinances in the code. Um, there's also specific requirements for inspections and testing and notes that we're gonna want on the plan, so. Make sure that you review the water and sewer ordinances and pull out that language, um, and if you have questions, you can always reach out to us. I'll try to dig out, um, any uh, specific details that we have. It may be all just outlined in in the code, but, um. But if you need them, I can, I can try to do some digging too.
Sarah, do you have any other comments or?
I'm not at this time. There are any rear exits? Um, well, the main entrance is here, right, well, the, there's one plan. Following the, but we have the entrance, we have a separate entrance for the.
I'm gonna.
Um, there it's full, a smaller section.
I'm gonna ask them to do one thing.
Then, yeah, we do have rear. Entrance door.
But if like delivers and all that, you'll have to go through the main entrance.
Yes.
Okay. So a truck doesn't have to get behind it somehow.
Yeah.
Mister Wino over here raised a good point before I wanted to bring it up, that. Depending on the use, what you described, it may require sprinkling of this building, so it may be beneficial to start looking at water pressure and. Water supply at this location to see if you're in any booster. Uh, pumping at all or or anything that could potentially affect the the building or the site, if you need something on the exterior, so.
Reese, do you have any kindnesses at this time?
Not anymore.
I was gonna say it.
I'll just cover them all the pieces. Yeah.
Anthony.
Just that, um. Besides what Christian has put down. Um. You'll also need whatever. Permits and approvals to operate the restaurant from the health department, so you'll need that prior to operating. And I have lots of other questions, but I'll wait. Yeah.
Yeah, um. Yeah. Nah, uh, the two hundred foot rule from the church, is that the entrance of the building or the entrance of the parking lots?
It's, it's the way the code, the way the statute reads is door to door, however, and this is. What I was gonna suggest and recommend. It would probably be beneficial for you to submit this plan. And a drawing showing where the church is located along with the measurement to licensing at S L A dot N Y dot gov. And ask them for an opinion. As to whether or not this property falls within the two hundred foot rule. Um, they they will give you that, you don't need a consultant, you don't need a lawyer. But I would ask them for an opinion before you get too far down the road here. Um. I think it's it's a wise idea because. A couple of things, one, you have a an alternative, I I don't know if it makes the project feasible or not. You have the right to have a beer and wine license. At the establishment, um, with the two hundred feet, you can always have a beer and wine license. Within two hundred feet of a church, school, house of worship, that's allowed under the statute. You cannot have a full liquor license, um, but you can have beer and wine. I don't know if that works for the operation, um, but it the statute. Needs, um, that the measurement. Can be taken on S L A's opinion. From the sidewalk where it starts on the street and not necessarily from the door. So it's all up to whichever S L A examiner handles the application. So I think if you kind of pull your teeth now and get some kind of clarification from them, it's better to fight the fight. Before you submit an application to us. Get a site plan approval and then submitting an application to them seeking an approval for a license. So I would do that. Um, it also will kind of help us through the process.
Yeah.
Um, I know a little bit about this, I did S L A licensing for almost twenty years, so. I'm telling you, it's probably better you start that process simultaneously with your review here.
We did, we did start that process. Um, I think I talk to a different person every day for me, I've got slightly different. So.
I will tell you, all the S L A, you're not actually speaking to the S L A unless they tell you, you are speaking to someone at a deputy commissioner level. So I'm just giving you that heads up as well, but.
Yeah, and and we did, we did email plan somebody, so. We got a preliminary review and. The result at this time was basically that. They can't make any determination until it goes through their board, which is, I think they said a twenty-six week process potentially for the. For the licensing, so we have that started, uh, we have a lawyer looking at it as well.
Yeah, good, it's a good idea because. I don't want you to go through an entire site plan approval and.
Yeah.
You you must. License, I will tell you that, it's as of right, if you already have a, if your clients already have a license for liquor or somewhere else, you'll be able to get a beer and wine license. Um, I'm not concerned about that, but liquor is a different story. So, just so you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
You also have, uh, three additional historic structures there. At the intersection of nine and fifty-two, you have that stone house. Right there at that corner, and then across the street from that, there's a little old wooden house, that's an obstructed site. And that one's sort of important because the state of New York wanted to take it down when they widened Route Nine and. Found out they couldn't do it, so if the state can't do it, so. And then also at the. Upper part of. Opal Avenue, uh, up in this upper corner here, there's a a storehouse there too. So that's three.
Store. Oh, the yellow, the yellow house.
Pardon?
The yellow house on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and also, if they're gonna go forward and like Nick, you were talking about with trying to get some like almost like not preapproval, but with the liquor stuff. That's also based off of they're gonna be able to keep this variance for the setback of the of the of the structure, if it changes that. They can't get that and they gotta get it closer to the road. That's good, that measurement.
Could change their application, sure.
And there's no building on there now, right? Or, right? Okay, that was the one they destroyed about thirty years ago. But that's a house on it.
Well, well, way, 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 way back. There was a house there, I forgot. What the. Name of it was, this, the voice for some reason, sticks my head, there was a, like a general store type thing there. And it was historic and then, uh. They took it down and of course then the village didn't have any historic preservation laws. The state didn't care, so that was the start of the. Of why, uh, the village has started the historical overlay districts and things like that, because the house came down and nobody could do anything about it.
Full circle.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, you have your homework. Do you, uh, you feel that you can, uh, have something by August twenty-first, or do you wanna?
I mean, yeah, um. Well, I think the, um, the feedback from the. Looking at where it is important, so.
Sure, yep.
Um.
Well, you have a.
If if that, if we, if we're allowed. Depending on on what the interpretation is there, if we can. We can move it. For forward, you know, depending on if it's not allowed and then they just want the beer and wine and then they can move it closer. Like there's a lot of, like, if we can, if we move the whole building closer.
The building this way.
Thing is, that eliminates. Most of the parking that we have now is. It's the other thing, so we're kind of.
I'm just saying, if you move it that way, the door's further back. And I don't, I can't, the whole building might be. Behind the two hundred, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, that that's possibility. Or about ten less parking lots.
But is the event, does their their one in Paul Spring have an event space? Is the event space?
No, it's really just a.
It's 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 pretty open, I mean, yeah, there there's no formal. It's kind of like a big.
That would increase the building, yeah.
You decrease the footprint.
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah, so if that's not a make or break. You can shrink the size of the building.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I mean, I think you wanted.
That is a make or break.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess something we're wondering.
And what about the apartments, is that a? I mean, I think it's a great concept and great idea, but. That reduces any types of waivers or variances for parking or any other type of. Footprint, is the apartment a?
Well, the apartments would just be on on footprint, so.
Uh.
But then when they, but then it's not, there's less. Writing for parking.
Yeah, right.
So they're set on like a seventy-seven, what is it, seventy-seven hundred per fifteen ten?
Seven thousand.
All right, seven thousand, so. As we're set on this, they want that size.
I mean, of course, if it's not possible reducing building, it's the only options, but I mean, you know, we're we're coming. These are people who live in Fish Hill, they live on the adjacent property. I'll review.
They live next door, yeah.
Lives next door.
Yeah, they live next door.
That, I was looking on.
Their small business.
There's that, that's a big parking lot for the, whatever that.
I I think I think they're probably gonna make money too, let's be honest.
Yeah.
Yeah. Totally fine, totally, but I don't think they're doing. Not doing benevolacy in the village, but you know, unless they're gonna give us a ten percent kickback or something, but. Um, not me, to this tax, um, no, I'm just kidding. So, yeah, but I, that's just something I was thinking about. And who would do that variance? The Z B A would do that for the setback on the road?
Say that again?
Who would be, who would have the grant that variance for the setback to Z B A?
Yeah.
D B A.
D B A.
For the setback or the parking?
Oh.
Well, but for the for the historic, you said that the have the structure still be closer to the road.
I thought that was just like a.
That's. It's one of the, that's one of the guidelines of the V C B D district is to move the buildings to the front and have the parking in the rear.
Yeah.
Um, but I do have a suggestion, just a thought to maybe explore. Um, if this two hundred line does stay. Maybe you turn the building. Um, and put the main entrance in the back, maybe this is what you guys were discussing and I couldn't hear.
Oh, sorry.
Put it in the back. And then have some kind of streetscape. I know you're losing parking, but if you can. Get that entrance just past that line and maybe you can put some parking behind as well.
How many seats roughly are you?
Yeah.
Hoping to get in this restaurant?
Um, there is a.
It's online, yeah. It's outlined on the, on the site plan.
Second. It's, I think.
Yeah, it's it's probably on the.
Hundred and thirty-four.
Is there a recommendation from the board on whether our next step should be to return? The planning as soon as we can or to go to zoning for a variance as our. Uh, X portion.
I'll I'll weigh in on that a little bit. I would. In the past, what the board has done is. Wait until you have some better answers on the layout, because you may go to the Z B A. And get a variance for X amount of spaces, and then it turns out that the layout changes at the planning. Board while you're doing that, and then you have to go back.
Yeah, and I think until we have some better clarity on the S L A issue. We're kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, um.
Generally, an applicant doesn't go to the Z B A until they've worked out a lot of the layout with the planning board. It it's in your best interest because then you don't make multiple travels.
Thank you.
It's just, so the. The entrance you're proposing. Is that? Closer to the old main at Main Street, or is it further, like, which way did it move?
It moved to the east.
So it moved closer, no, oh, yeah, so it moved further away.
Yeah, because the existing draft curb is like over here.
Yeah. So move further into the bend.
Into the bend, yeah.
Right, which the the man.
That's crazy.
It's better for this way.
It's better for the other one, yeah.
From.
Right.
Yeah. Plus employees.
Probably park, there's not a park.
Yeah.
This is.
Yeah, if you put on an event, you're gonna have.
This is.
Twenty employees. Right time, waitstaff, cooks, front of the house, all that.
And then there's. And the park.
Yeah, I don't know.
Move the building, move it over, ask the guy, since it's his. Move it over, ask the guy next door, use his parking, there you go, problem solved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Point about the employee, that's good.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
It's not that true.
That's not, yeah.
I mean, is, the employees, I mean, is that not built into the calculations for the?
So, Sarah, the employees are built in the calculation, right? Yeah, for the parking, yeah. Yeah. And the business. How many employees do you think you're going to have? Cause that also, I mean, when when the Z B A or this board is looking at your parking. They will take that into consideration as well.
Yeah, we were just having that discussion about, like, I mean, if you're gonna have an event. And you're having capacity for over a hundred people. How many people do you think would have to work there in order to make that apply?
Yeah.
You know. I'm not a restaurateur, but I would imagine it would be twenty in that ballpark.
Everybody in the last round. Okay. Our next meeting is on the twenty-first of August. You have the first week of. You have the first week of August to to get back on the agenda, so I'd put you on now, but I think you got quite a bit of work ahead of you there. But if you get your work done, you feel that, uh, you're ready to come back, of course, uh, and get ahold of Jenny here and we'll put you on the agenda.
Well, thanks for all your input.
Welcome. What we're here for.
If you do have any questions too, you can always reach out to me, you know, specifically about the project.
That also goes for our engineer too, feel free to call him at any time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the last agenda item we have, uh. Reese, anything?
I will not be here at the next meeting.
Twenty-first, okay. Anthony?
Uh, no, just, uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Now, when I, when I was voting, I'm like, should I vote for her? Cause she, with that quantity.
Do you have anything yet?
No.
And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host, carry, and our next meeting is the twenty-first of August. And for some reason you can't make it, please let Jenny know as soon as possible.